Yeah, I got perfect. Thanks. Okay, I'd like to call the Eastham Township Planning Board meeting for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. Everybody please rise for the pledge. My pledge is that the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, this is a regularly scheduled meeting pursuant to the resolution adopted on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three with a meeting notice sent to the Hundredan County Democrat on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. A copy of the agenda for this meeting was posted to the township website on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, posted on the bulletin board and filed in the clerk's office on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Nardi?
Here.
Ms. Stetson?
Here.
Mayor Casper Bloom?
Here.
Mr. Codri?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Ms. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Dedweiler?
Here.
Mr. Katanachi? Mr. Mills?
Here.
Ms. Peron? Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stanley?
Here.
There hasn't been any, I'm assuming everybody's looked at the agenda beforehand. There hasn't been no changes since last Thursday. So let's move on. Can I get a motion to open citizens to speak on items not on the agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open to the public. Anyone? Wow, okay. Seeing nobody, I will close that. Presentation of the minutes, has everybody reviewed the minutes? Any changes, modifications? If everything is good, all right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes of August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three minutes are approved. All the other ones, two through seven, are being worked on, or at least some of them are being worked on. Hopefully, we can knock one or two of those out in the October meeting. Moving right along, resolutions for approval, we have none. For item number eight, new business, the electric vehicle charging station ordinance, this was brought up by the township committee September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. They had their first reading. It's ordinance twenty-three dash eleven. Township committee just want to give a quick summary of what it's all about.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, it was recommended in our master plan, which I think everybody's aware of. And it's pretty much, the language is pretty much by statute. Alexa did a lot of work on it. We just changed a little bit. So we did the first reading on Thursday and then, we were supposed to have the planning board look over it and see if it fits in with our master plan, but I'm not sure people have a copy of the ordinance to look it over.
Not see one in there.
Yeah, so.
And for the benefit of the public, maybe just a little kind of high-level summary. So essentially, what it does is it makes it easier under zoning to have parking spaces for EVs, you know, electric vehicle parking spaces. And so the theory is, if you've got those available, it's an incentive to encourage members of the public to have EVs. They could park them. Also, there's some provisions in there about making it simpler to get an approval if you need a charging station at your house, or if your business has one out front. So again, as Jen has said, it mostly comes from state law, but the principle, I think, is in keeping with what the planning board and the township committee want, which is to, you know, encourage renewables and renewable vehicles as something that's good for our community.
Yeah, I mean, I went through it, you know, I started your meeting, I read it. Seems fine by me. Marnie?
I just have one question. Is it okay, even though everyone didn't, and I had looked at it?
Yeah, I think it's fine, yeah.
Okay. I mean, something you might want to think about before the second reading. It's the part on requirements for new installation, D two, I just, before I say this, I want to say this is great. This is something that's recommended under sustainable jersey, it, you know, gets us points. It's, I mean, it's pretty much the law whether we do it or not, right? It's just more complicated.
Except we won't be implementing it here in town.
In town, okay.
And so that won't help further the policy you're talking about, so.
So, but on this one section, D two, parts three through six, so it's starting out how many spaces you need based on how big the lot is. And it goes up to seventy-five to a hundred spaces, a hundred and one to a hundred and fifty, over a hundred and fifty. And I was just wondering if maybe we don't want that in there, since I don't think that our master plan anticipates any parking for a hundred vehicles, do we?
Can I answer that, though?
Yes.
Marty, a lot of this, this is all mandatory language. So the statute requires this language to be in here. So this would be, the vast majority of this is actually.
The vast majority of this is based off of an ordinance that DCA put out, and all of this is part of that language. So any municipality who adopts this is going to have that language. So unfortunately.
That's what I was guessing.
Yeah, unfortunately, kind of stuck with it.
Can you, because here's, if I were an attorney and I, you know, had something before us, and you said to me, we don't have a hundred parking spaces in our town, I would say, oh, but you anticipated in your EV. I mean, can you say, applying to, anything above would rely on state law, so that we don't have it, like, explicitly spelled out? Or is that just not allowed?
That's just, this is how the, like, it's required language in the statute, and the statute doesn't differentiate based on, you know, the size of the municipality or anything like that, unfortunately.
Can you speak a little bit for the public on the policy behind having a requirement of a certain number of spaces by size?
Yeah, so it just creates a uniform way of applying the statute throughout the state, right? So developers, or, you know, so this doesn't apply to someone who's building a single-family home, say, right? So the minimum is, I believe it's five units of multifamily dwelling. So here, from what I understand, there's very few, five, you know, five unit properties here without a place for residential. And then, you know, anything else, so like, you think of retail, anything like that, where there's a parking lot or a parking garage, where this applies to. So it's just a universal standard for it to be applied throughout the state that needs to be adopted.
So would it apply to the UAW proposal?
So I believe in that resolution, they agreed to it.
Yeah.
Because the ordinance wasn't in place. So they agreed to apply to this. So it would apply to them if they agree to it, to abide by this.
And so, I mean, the way I think about it, is you can tell me if you have a different sense of it, is that, you know, so if we did have larger developments, which we don't really have here, it's saying the developer would have to at least have this many slots for EVs. So the idea is, when you have a larger development, to encourage some of those to be EV slots, so that they're there. It's not going to apply that much to us, I think, and that's why the fact that it's boilerplate language doesn't really matter so much. But the principle, I think, is good, that if we're larger municipalities do development, let's make sure the EVs can park there, because that's going to encourage it.
Yep.
So this is just exactly the same as.
The vast, the vast majority of this.
So what is not the same?
The, off the top of my head, most of the, like, the, so if we're going, we're starting from the back, make sure it's actually right, like, the reasonable standards, so most of this, like, the parking, the safety, some of this is required.
If you wanted to make it stricter, could you, or not?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you can make it.
Not for, I don't know about for the, I can't, at least for this, this stuff, anything that's not mandatory language, you could, but I'm not so sure.
I see, so.
Because there is a, there's a clause in here somewhere, it says, nothing, nothing stops you from adding more spaces than what's required under the law.
But nothing allows you to say, we don't have that much parking in our town?
Yeah, no. It just wouldn't apply, right? So if the, if the development, the ordinance here, zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance, it just don't allow for that size of development, this isn't going to allow that.
How about on a separate issue, like, you know, let's say in the, you know, downtown, John Ringo's Road or something, you know, if we wanted to have more spaces available there, does the township have an ability to have its own ordinance to say, you know, separate from this model ordinance for EV parking, that we could require some? I assume we could, right?
Yeah, as long as the minimum is met, there shouldn't be a problem whatsoever.
Is that like a supremacy clause provision of this, or anything that would?
No, not that I'm aware of. As long as the minimum's met, it's fine.
So, I mean, I think, Marty, that would go to your issue, if you think there's some places in town where we ought to be having some more. I think apart from this, you know, need the planning board to think about that, and think about where that would be and recommend it to the township committee.
No, my only thing was, I was just shocked when I saw a hundred and fifty parking places. I was like.
So, Marty, are you concerned that a developer would come in and say, well, you anticipated a big, a big development, because you have this in your ordinance, is that you support a hundred and fifty parking places? Sort of like the warehouse definition thing?
Well, what Alexis is telling me is.
Is that where you're going?
I'm quite sure someone might say that, but what Alexis is telling me is that.
Is that your concern?
That is, if I were a lawyer in front of this board, I would say, well, you anticipated a hundred and fifty.
Exactly, that's why.
Spaces, yeah.
So, though we can't change the statute, we can't change the boilerplate, can we add something that says, nothing in this shall be construed to allow large parking spots? Or, you know, nothing in this should be construed to override zoning as relates to the number of park, the size of the.
I don't know how, I mean, an attorney could definitely try to make that argument for the board, but I don't know how fearful that would be, because then they would be here. You know, they still have to, as long as your zoning ordinance doesn't provide that, this isn't going to be the way that lets them in to, you know.
But I think what I'm only saying is, that would be an easy fix if we were allowed to, like, certainly not, you'll see these clauses all over the place.
Yeah, this is.
If we were allowed to do it, it would be an easy fix.
Yeah, yeah. And that's something you could probably plop in somewhere that is not in the mandatory language, which I don't have the draft, the model ordinance here with me today, but that's something you could probably put in, you know, towards the end, if that's something that they wanted, but nothing, you know, nothing in this ordinance, you know.
Is there severance, severability clause?
Yeah.
Go right before the severability.
Yeah, yeah. But that's something you could even pop in at the end, you know, just like the intent, or even in the intent of the, like, the whereas clauses too, the intent there, you could add that, you know, nothing, all of this is mandatory language based on statute, and nothing is intended to.
Yeah.
Change the municipality's intent to minimize the small, large development in the typically traditional rural, rural town, or something to that nature. You pop that right into whereas clause, or somewhere too, in the actual substance of the ordinance. I believe, thinking about this, I could double-check and send it to the board. The purpose, it could be added in the purpose. I don't believe that is mandatory language off the top of my head.
Maybe that's something, this has got to get referred to the township committee anyway, if, I mean, this, this, this board could, you know, decide today, I guess, that we recommend this with that kind of provision in there, just in case it helps.
The process is.
Yeah, but if it's in there, I think it's easier for the township, if it's got a whole package in there.
Just one thing, too. So we're here for master plan consistency, right? So in our discussion as well, we want to make sure that we have on the record why we all believe that this ordinance is consistent with the master plan. It's not really a tough question, based on why we know we're here, but that is a finding that you want to make tonight in the resolution for next month. It's there.
Anybody have any objections to what Alexis has said? I mean, we can put an amendment in, or you guys can put an amendment in to it, and then you can have your second reading next month.
Alexis, how do we have to formally say, I mean, our master plan specifically recommends this? Do we have to do something in addition to that? No?
No.
Okay.
I know, it's like a trick question. I didn't mean to make it like a trick question. But no, just so it's clear that, you know, you believe that it's consistent with the master plan and the master plan reexamine, reexamination report, if everyone believes that, which is why it's here tonight.
I think we have a consensus on that.
Do we need to vote on this one, then, with the board, or?
I assume you want.
Yeah, make it official, official?
I mean, I'm willing to make the motion to recommend this to the township committee, and, you know, with the addition that Emily suggested, so that there's a proviso that it doesn't presuppose that we favor increased development. And, and I, and I think also, and I would agree, it's simple, right, what Alexis was saying, that we do find that this measure is consistently with, consistent with the master plan.
Okay. Can I get a second?
A second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who did the first?
Don't they?
I'm just, are we voting to say this is consistent with the master plan?
Yes.
And that's all we're voting on?
Right, but township committee.
No, no, we're also voting to recommend this to the township committee.
Right.
Okay, with the changes?
With the addition that you suggested.
Okay.
And then Alexis is going to mark that up after the vote, and so, you know.
And then we get a resolution.
Send that to Jenna.
Yep.
Yep.
Work on it, Jenna.
Sorry, I didn't mean to go, I just wanted to try to see what we were doing.
Rather have it down the right way.
Do we voice votes first, and then follow up with a roll call?
I don't know which order she usually goes in, but.
Alphabetical? Left to right, right to left?
Mr. Nardi?
Yes.
Ms. Stetson?
Yes.
Mayor Casper Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Codri?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Dedweiler?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Can we get in discussion with the public on this at all?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you'd probably want to talk to, at the next township committee meeting on the amendment that they're putting in. We have the ordinance here, if you want a copy of it.
Can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Alexis, will you tell me, I don't want to misspeak, but my understanding is that
for this part of it, it's just to see whether it's consistent with the master plan, and so that's up to us. And then whether it's a good ordinance or not will be the hearing before the public, which will be.
So what I'm asking is, will this be incorporated into our master plan, which was item number thirty, adopt the model statewide municipal EV ordinance, which was one of the items we were going to be working on? And now, can I assume that this has already been included in our master plan, or is this one of the items we're still working on?
It is still being worked on. We're giving our recommendation to township committee on this. They had our first reading. We reviewed it. We gave them our feedback. Their next meeting, they'll have a second reading before they make a change.
It's a different thing, right? The, the planning board adopts the master plan, and then, what, I think what we're doing now with a number of things that the chairman's scheduled for an agenda, we're now talking about things pursuant to that master plan that we're doing.
But it's not in our master.
It doesn't become the master plan.
Correct.
But now this is an item that we have a recommendation that will go to the township committee, and township committee will do the same, notice it, provide a copy, have the public have a chance to make comments, and then decide.
So it's going to go in a reverse way? It's going to go to the township first, and then have it come back and?
No.
Can I say something?
It goes upstream, right?
Megan.
I understand.
You want to, you want to time on this one?
We're not changing the master plan.
Yeah.
The master plan is adopted, done, and dusted.
But the master plan said it needed to have this put into it.
The master plan said we needed, we needed to adopt the EV ordinance, which is what we're doing.
Right.
Which is what the township is doing. We're just recommending it.
My bad.
The ordinance is where the rubber hits the road.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, I thought that it would be in our master plan, we would develop an ordinance and send it to the township, but that's not really happening. We're saying it's not in our master plan.
It is in there.
It is, but this board doesn't, we don't create the ordinances, that's.
The township committee does that.
So can I, I'll just give a quick.
Go ahead.
So the way, the, the master plan, right, or the reexamination report, is a big summary of what this board and what the municipality see, envision for land use ordinances, right? So most land use ordinances will start with the township committee, right? They introduce the ordinance. After they introduce the ordinance, and this is the same for any land use ordinance, right, anything, and I believe it's chapter ninety-two, it will then come after introduction from the committee, will then come to this board. This board has to determine, and this is our only purpose for, when it's on referral from the committee, is whether or not this ordinance, this land use ordinance, is consistent with the master plan, right? So when we're looking at this ordinance, it's, it kind of gets twisted up in the master plan, because we just did it so fresh, but we have to determine here, is the board or the board, not we? The board has to determine if it's consistent with that master plan and that reexamination report. If they so find that it is, then it is referred back to the township committee for a second hearing. And in second hearing, there is a public hearing, and if, after public hearing, and there's no amendments to it, it's adopted, and then it becomes part of the code.
So since we're going to have the second hearing at the next one.
At the committee.
Have we determined that this one, that in this point of the planning, that it is consistent with our master plan?
You got it.
Correct.
And I'm not saying, I'm saying that, you know, the fact about that you have to have electrical vehicle parking spaces that are only for electrical vehicles, and can't be used for anything but electrical vehicles, I think does affect some of our plan, parking, where we were talking before, about you have to have so many parking spaces. I don't think we've ever told people, or don't know that we had it in our master plan, that it wasn't enough to have parking spaces, you also had to have electrical vehicle parking spaces.
So with this ordinance, when you have a EV, you have a requirement for an EV parking space, that counts towards your other parking spaces too. It's not in addition to what you're required to have.
Even though you can't be used for non.
Yeah. And that's on purpose, right? The purpose of that is if someone has an EV and they want to charge it, a regular gasoline car is not sitting there, or even an EV sitting there, not plugged in, because that's also a problem as well, right?
I understand completely, because that's saying that if we have, like, for our senior citizens, where we had, say, thirty parking spaces, now, and that was what, regular parking spaces, we would now need thirty-three parking spaces, or thirty.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the way to think about it. I mean, think about it, if there's new development, right?
Right.
And they, they create new parking spaces, they're going to create some that will be for EVs. So no one's going out there and getting rid of parking spaces that senior citizens use. It's a different thing.
They need to create more.
If you're doing the development, this says you have to have it. And if you have your own house, and you need a permit to get it, this makes it simpler. Neither of those things takes away from seniors.
I understand that completely. I'm just wondering when the senior citizen one comes back again, and we went through all of this, of how many parking spots that they were going to have. We're now going to make sure that they have those parking spaces, plus additional ones for EV.
What, what?
No, not additional.
What are you referring to about senior citizen parking? What are you referring to?
UAW?
The UAW.
The UAW, our senior citizens, we went through a lot on how many parking spaces, how big they were going to be, what was going to be their size.
This is, yeah, that's, that's it. They're not adding anything. This is, they're going to deem X number to be for electrical.
One of their conditions, one of their conditions was to have, I can't remember, one or two EVs. So that's not going to change. They're not going to come back. We're not going to change that.
And we are not concerned at all about the electrical grid being able to support this, even though our power goes down every day.
But not because of, not because of charging cars.
Well, of course not. We don't, we're not charging cars. I say, what happens when we start doing it?
No, no, we are actually, I mean, they're, I charge cars at my, at my house, right?
Your house, right.
So there are people, but there are people, that's, right, so, so the thing is, the, when we have issues with our service, it's because a tree falls down on the lines, and because we have electrical grid that's above ground, when it falls down, that's a different issue from how much we're charging.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and I'm sorry that I broke in and didn't do this properly.
It's okay, Linda. That's fine. That's fine. Okay, where were we? I know we voted, uh, Linda, next item, right?
Yeah, unfinished business.
Okay. Let's get back to that one. All right, unfinished business, the subcommittee reports. Let's go back to warehousing and resolving their inconsistencies. I know Emily created a lovely document, that it was in front of everyone today.
We had this last time.
Yes, we did. I also reached out to Megan via email. Before we start this, I'm going to defer to our professionals and get your feedback, if you want to provide to the board, what you responded to me.
Yeah, I thought, so I read the document that was before the board.
There's a mistake in this document, just so you know. I wrote it, and there's a mistake in it.
So I just kind of reviewed it in the sake of consistency of what the state was recommending as far as citing goes of warehousing. And it seems like, overall, you know, having large warehouses would be very, like, completely inconsistent with what the state is saying where it's appropriate, because as far as planning areas go, I mean, the whole town is either rural planning or environmentally sensitive, and that's really like a no-go area for, for the large-scale warehouses. The one thing I said might be appropriate is maybe like those last mile places where it's, it's really not big truck traffic, traffic, it's typically vans in and out, and it's usually a hundred fifty square feet, or a hundred fifty thousand square feet or less, which I know is kind of arbitrary, and that's a big number, but it's something that possibly could be appropriate in a town like this. Yeah, and then, again, looking at the language, and especially with the industrial uses, a lot of times, the warehouses can kind of sneak into that. And it might be appropriate saying something, you know, looking at the definitions of the, of the ordinance, and seeing what industrial use means, or, you know, updating it to say what it does not mean very specifically, that it does not mean large-scale warehouses, that type of thing.
Nice question.
Absolutely.
Can we also say it doesn't, it does not include, you know, small-scale warehouses? I mean, we want to be clear that it doesn't include.
Industrial.
We don't want, we don't want the last mile ones here either, I'm, I'm pretty sure. I don't want to speak for the people. But we're saying, we don't want warehouses of any type, shape, manner. So, you know, I think what I'm hearing you say is, you know, we're in the rural planning areas and environmentally sensitive, possibly someone could argue that a last-mile warehouse could be, could fit in even in that. And we want to, and so within our ordinances, we basically want to say, not even those. And we can say that explicitly. I'm asking, and it wasn't a, that wasn't a.
Explicitly, I don't know if Alexis, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, if it's not something that you want to make a permitted use, you can strike that from the ordinance. I haven't seen this document before now, but that's something that you can strike, if that's something that you want, because it looks like you have, it's referred to in two separate sections. So you could strike that word, or you could do Megan's saying, and you could specify what you want and what you don't want in the definition. So then it's uniform throughout.
Yep.
Your code, that you see the word warehouse, or sometimes you use a distribution center, you see that, you know, it does not include X.
Any of these things.
Yeah. And that's the easiest way to change it, if you're wanting to allow, if you were, if the board were one to allow smaller-scale warehouse, warehouse like that, to make sure you say, it includes this and not that, make it explicit. But we also have to remember that, in the world we live in, everything evolves really quickly. So even when you think of, right now, like, last mile, like, Amazon-type parcel hubs, didn't exist probably five, six years ago, right? So it's going to be an evolving thing. So you're going to try to make it as broad as possible, but also narrow enough to make sure you're reaching your objectives now. See, I know that's not like a very.
Yeah, I'm trying to get between the two.
But if I were, if you were to specifically exclude, say, or specifically include that you did not want those type of small-scale warehouses, say, a hundred fifty square feet, that's an arbitrary number, right? Because they could come and say a hundred fifty thousand and one square foot, and now we're, that doesn't count.
Oh, you're saying, so don't be too narrow in what you don't want?
Because that might not be a term that is used in the next five to six years.
Got it, now I understand what you're saying.
It may be even more evil than what we think of, or what is thought of that, is now in municipalities like this.
Got it, yeah, okay.
Did, Megan, did you offer an opinion on the fact that we have warehouse in our, you know, when we talk about number of parking spaces, we have warehouse listed?
Yeah.
And yet, we're talking about not having warehouses?
Ninety-two, ninety-eight, ninety-two, ninety-nine, where the word warehouses in there, offsets.
Right, I think that was one thing we discussed, I think it was in the, in the thing you gave me, that it was to strike that.
To strike that, okay.
Really get rid of that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And that's okay, we can do that.
Don't they?
I'm sorry, where was it? No, I'm sorry, but where was it listed?
It's in the, like, list of number of parking spaces for different uses.
So that might very well be that it was just missed in an amendment years ago, like, something was removed and pulled out, and just didn't go, no, and that happens all the time. Like, it's just, you don't think to look somewhere when you're amending an Like it's just, you don't think to look somewhere when you're amending an ordinance to go and pull that out, that word. And that could have just been where that, at the remnant of that, so.
Dante?
All I was thinking was, you know, after we have this conversation, now that we've got half of the professionals here, I think the next thing would be to figure out how to get it into a short list, a specific list. Like, for example, if we're thinking of changing a definition, Alex, which Alexis was saying, you know, ha- having something there to look at, I think would be helpful. In the same way, you know, Emily had a list of a couple of things, you know, Megan's obviously contributing on that. So if we had, you know, let's say a list of six things that would be done, that, something that would make it sort of actionable then by, you know, Township Committee, for example.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I feel really dense. So you're saying in order to say no warehouses, we need to define what we need. So it would have a definition for warehouses and then another place we'd say this is what we don't want.
Yeah, just to make it, so I would have to, I honestly have, I just, I'm seeing this. I had to look at that section of the code to make a fully informed conclusion. But it's tricky because you want to make it, you're essentially making it a private use, right, in all terms. But if you have it somewhere lingering around in the code like that, you want to make sure it's defined that that's, this is what that word means if you do see it.
And but what she's also saying is don't make it too narrow. And I'll make it, it's saying chestnut trees aren't allowed, walnut trees aren't allowed. No large trees aren't allowed. And then you forget.
Right.
Beach trees and so, oh, we didn't have beach trees in there, so you could put beach trees, right? Taking it, so that's where that writing.
And that's where I was trying to go with, and that's what, so if we sort of give all these comments and give Alexis a chance to take a look at what it is, I think then she could do the drafting because with with that overview analysis and how to do it, she could say, here's why I recommend having this definition, have that provision to do it because it becomes a, an approach, right? And then that's easier for us to then review the approach than to sort of group discuss it, is my experience.
Yep. Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
You good with that?
Maybe.
Any comments from the board?
Just, just for the record, I said in ninety-two eighty-six that the chapter seems to only cover Emerald Valley District. I went back and read it and it's written, just the way it's written, it's, it does actually say nothing. It did say all uses not expressly prohibited in this chap- chapter are prohibited in all districts. I still think it could be made more clear. But that is in the code today. I was like, that was, that was concerning to me. It is in the code, I was wrong about that. And I'm just putting it out there.
But I like your point because it should be really clear and crystal clear. And so if there's a better way to write it, and again, I think Alexis in looking at the whole provision, I think can give us the best advice about that centrally and early. And that would be a big benefit.
Yeah.
Perfect. Anybody else on the board? All right, seeing nothing from the board. Uh, can I get a motion to open the public for the Subcommittee report regarding the warehouses?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody? Come on up, Linda.
Linda Raff, East Amwell Residence. This is going to apply to everything. It sounds like you've done a great job, Emily. We don't get to see it. When will we see the form that, or, you know, will we see it when it's included in the total master plan? I mean, you're talking about this and you said you've handed all this out, but we in the public don't have it to look at.
Right.
And so I'm just saying, when do we get to see it?
So, I, I mean, I, I think what I was just suggesting was, and Al could tell me if he agrees and everybody else agrees, is that we're sort of coalesced some ideas last time, our professionals are now weighing in, and then we're going to ask our attorney to to suggest something. And so as part of that, there'll be at least a list of bullet items that I'm sure we'd be happy to share for the next meeting. And then, so we can then act on it and send it to the Township Committee. And again, this doesn't become part of the master plan, but it's something that we're doing, it's part of it.
So we would make our comments at the next meeting when we get this. And that's fine. I didn't, I mean, I know we're, we shouldn't get in too early on this, but I'm just saying at some point I'd like to see it before it went into the final master plan.
Oh, absolutely.
And it sounds like you've got everything covered, it's just my mind is grasping.
Just, just for rough, we're not changing the master plan. It's going to go into ordinance.
Right.
Okay, very good.
So I think master plan is done and now we're doing a bunch of things pursuant to it and they're going to go into places.
Well, I thought when we were doing the reexamination of the master plan that we meant we were going to be making changes to the master plan. But we're saying, no, we're not making any more changes to the master plan. This is just to come up with possible ordinances that would go further.
Yeah, to make it really, really clear, the reexamination is actually the updating of the master plan is the easy way to think about it.
Okay.
It's just, it's just improperly, in my opinion, it's, it's very confusingly named. But you're basically, that is an update. So that's done, that's done.
That's done, now we're acting, right?
Okay, thank you very much.
We didn't name it, by the way.
Anyone else?
Francis Gavigan, I want to compliment you, especially Emily and all of you for very thorough. I didn't get to here as soon as I would have liked to, but I like the direction. And I kind of like it maybe for putting things in plain English. The master plan decided what you were going to cook for Thanksgiving. And the ordinances are going to be the recipes. And say, you know, don't put cayenne pepper in your dessert, that kind of a thing. Is that an accurate analogy? Or is that just coming from left field where I usually reside?
Yeah.
Because it can be hard for people.
I think it's the entree. It's like, it's recommended that this should be on the menu. And now when the ordinances are adopted, that's the, that's the, that's the full follow-through.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just that there's going to be more than one.
Yes.
But it's a good start.
Yeah, and we're discussing it amongst the board to come up with ideas, you know, and Alexis will provide that information. We'll pass it off, you know, to Township Committee, where then they, you know, in time, we'll change that ordinance to strike the word warehouse from a couple of things, plus other things as well.
You know, the garden store that's over there at five seventy-nine and thirty-one is supposedly being sold to be a warehouse, become a warehouse. So anybody needing their last mile, they won't have to go too far. But it's a, it's a good start. Just, I would just urge that you get people who show up and pay attention, at least get input, even if it's informally with the master plan, you had meetings with folks. And there might be people that have ideas that are worth, you know, accommodating. And I'll ask my other question when you get to open to the public later.
Okay.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you, Francis. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public on this warehouse Subcommittee? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on. Let's.
I'm sorry, before we move on, so with the, I know Alexis is going to review it, but for like the three recommendations for one and two, is the Planning Board making a recommendation to the Township Committee to amend those ordinances today? I mean, not, not like today, but like.
Yeah, for the next meeting.
We'll send you something in writing with a list.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think we're giving up yet. Giving it up to you yet, right?
No, 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 I just meant these two are like with Austria parking and.
Yeah, ninety-two ninety-eight, ninety-two ninety-nine, I think that can be stricken.
That's, I mean, they're, they're not major.
Alexis, correct me if I'm wrong.
I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the right, we're all on the same page.
Yeah, ninety-two ninety-eight, uh, and ninety-two ninety-nine where the word ordinances.
Yeah, that's where.
We can strike, the Township Committee can strike those.
That would be easy enough where you would just have the ordinance and you would put a strike there.
Okay.
You know, that's a very easy thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So that's consistent with our master plan and the.
Yeah, this is.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you want to vote on that now?
We're not doing, you'll have to eventually vote on that. That'll eventually come back.
Right, yeah.
For the, for this all informal.
We're getting ahead of ourselves.
We'll have an ordinance just yet from the committee.
Okay, Jenna?
Yeah, good, perfect, yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, next Subcommittee report is on the dark sky. Marnie, Jenna?
So.
Whomever?
So we talked about this a little bit last time. The impetus for this was a couple of things to try and make sure there aren't any sort of dark sky loopholes. In particular, because I always listen to Francis being concerned about twenty-four-hour-a-day greenhouses. And also thinking about, you know, lighting back best practices that have changed, you know, since this ordinance was amended, I think in two thousand and six, I'm not positive. And so what the board has is a redlined version, which is just suggestions of some possible changes we could think about. Obviously, you can go to the professionals to get insight. You know, thinking about protecting biodiversity and about limiting light pollution. So I don't know, this was on the drive, so hopefully everyone had a chance to look at it.
I thought it was helpful and I think they're all going in the right direction and I think you're right for that focus it on particular things.
Unless I missed it, I might have.
Anybody else?
No, I just want to say Marnie did a lot of work on this one. So we appreciate all the work you did, Marnie, on the lighting ordinance. But that was a lot of red line and changes and stuff, so thank you.
Well, I got comments from, the way I do things is think about what I think and then get ideas from other people that know more and are smarter than I am. So the feedback you got from Bill was really helpful.
Oh, yeah.
I got, yeah, I had Mike take a look at it, I had Tam take a look at it. So I, not, not just my thinking. And I'll just say for anyone that's interested, this is total aside, but there's an incredible article in The Atlantic called How Animals Perceive the World. I think it's last month and it is a lot about human light pollution and noise pollution and how devastating it is for biodiversity. And so if you're on the fence about this, it's a good article to read.
Thank you. Anybody else want to discuss this on the board before I open to the public? No? Okay, well, seeing the board has nothing else. Could I get a motion to open to the public for dark skies?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's open to the public on this one. Anyone want to talk? Francis?
Real quick, when's it available to the vote to take a look at? It's hard to have an opinion or a discussion when it's just, you know, flattery from Marnie and something you guys have seen. But it would be, you know, a draft or something that we could see.
Yeah. I can, I can, I'll print out the draft for you. I can take care of that for you.
And while you're waiting, Francis, I'll just let you know, it's taking places in the ordinances where greenhouses aren't included for twenty-four-hour lighting and including it. And talking about preferences for long-wave lighting as opposed to short-wave lighting.
One of the agricultural uses where you might have a greenhouse, you might have something or different things like that. I recall from when this first came up that there were some really good ordinances about this in Denver and in Colorado. So that might be worth.
Well, this, we looked at one from Maine, which is supposed to be a.
Dark sky?
Yeah.
And stuff like that. Okay, thanks.
I mean, Al, process-wise, I mean, I for one would be fine with, you know, if we're, if we work up a draft, if you take a look at it and we're going to be talking about it, you know, releasing that as part of, you know, the agenda and things.
Absolutely.
People to look at because, you know, we're just brainstorming issues and things.
Agreed.
Do we think maybe we want Megan to take a look at this before next month and then I could incorporate changes if she has suggestions? And then we could have a draft ready for.
Do you have access to our drive?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll see if I can make that happen.
I feel like we want to. We, we want to.
I can also email.
Yeah, we can email as well. I'm just curious. I asked Alexis the same question. Make your life easier. It's like, an email from Al, oh no, don't.
It's probably easier, probably your life is easier if I email it to you.
Anyone else from the public want to comment on the, uh, work the Subcommittee's done on dark skies? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public on the dark skies? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. All right.
I'm sorry, Al, clarification on that. So are, in terms of our next step, how do you envision us? Because, I mean, Marnie has actually redlined something which is helpful. Are you asking the professionals to take a quick look and then?
Yes, 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 I can email Megan tomorrow and I can see what I can do to give her access to our Planning Board, uh, drive. How that works, I'm not quite sure, who gives, you know, access.
Kristen should do it.
It's Linda, Kristen, somebody, yeah. Yeah, no worries, but I'll email you tomorrow.
Alexa does have access, but Megan doesn't.
Yeah.
I'll email too.
Yeah. Okay. Next one on the Subcommittee is the review of the Farmland Preservation Plan. Ma, Mike?
Sure, so we're, I guess, finally on a true path to a Farmland Preservation Plan. We had our kickoff meeting with Stephen Bruder and Megan and Jenna earlier in September. That kind of set off the contract with the SADC to, you know, move this across and get it going. Megan is going to be working on completing the mapping effort, hopefully by the end of October, early November. And maybe at the same time, you'll be updating the language or maybe after, updating the language of the plan.
Way after the.
Probably after.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and then, then we'll have our two public meetings with the AC, Agriculture Advisory Committee, to ex, to discuss existing policy, look at any changes on maybe the targeted lands, but I don't think that's, there's not much to discuss, but we still have to review it. And we'll have a second meeting to present a draft plan. And I think that's it. And then also, we, we did get some funding, so Jenna, thank you for doing all that. I'm not sure exactly much, was it five thousand, the additional funding or was that approved?
Yeah, it's five thousand from the SADC and then I am hopeful we will be getting five thousand from Hunterdon County as well. It's not official yet, but I'm fairly confident.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, and thanks to Megan because I didn't know about the SADC grant, that was all Megan, so I just filled out the paperwork.
Yeah, so now it looks like we're actually on the right course. After all this for the past year, we, we really thought we were, but we obviously weren't. We never even had a contract. I came into the middle of it, so I just assumed all these things when we're like drafting this plan, these things, so. Thank you.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, so at least we're moving in the right direction.
Right. Any comments or questions from the board?
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
Mike, I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. The, when you have a draft plan, that's, there's open meetings in Agriculture Advisory and there's a couple of opportunities there for people from the public or even myself as a member of the public to attend and read, learn, give input.
Yes.
Okay, and then when, when we have the plan done, what, what's the, like, what's the, we're, the goal isn't just to have a plan. The goal is to then execute upon the plan, right? So that allows us to then go back for more funding? Did I understand that correctly? To actually buy properties? Is that, is that sort of, I'm, I'm just, I'm really dense here on this one.
Well, can, can.
So yeah, once the plan is put in, yeah, because the plan will also have to be adopted, but there's going to be a Planning Board hearing for it too.
Okay.
So it will come before the Planning Board to be adopted as an official element of the master plan.
Okay.
So then what that does from the SADC side, it puts the Township back into their appropriation every year, where you can get money back to start executing the plan because there is a one, five, ten-year target for everything. So you can start, you know, picking those sparks off.
Thank you.
She's better answered.
Thank you, Megan.
And Megan, without that plan in place, you can't access that money, is that?
So the, the town has money currently from previous appropriations, but you can't get new, and it's, I don't remember, it's not a whole lot. I mean, you can't get a whole lot from what's existing right now, so in order to get more and actually purchase the fire.
You want this in place?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, that's.
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
Great news.
Yeah. All right, could I get a motion to open to the public on this Subcommittee report?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public want to discuss this? Okay.
Same as before, when do we get to see the list?
Hopefully soon, maybe next meeting? No, no promises on that one, though. But let me hear back from, you know, Megan and these guys and we'll go from there. Okay, seeing nobody, could I get a motion to close to the public?
Sub moved.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Last on the Subcommittee report is Historical Preservation. Richard's not here today.
Good, good.
I was hoping Richard was here. So I've been confused about this all along because I knew that we had national historic districts. And I, and Francis kept talking about these plans that existed and I remember that Alona had done plans. So then Tam reminded me that there, that there are, I mean, I think from the boxes in the basement. me that there, that there are, I mean, I think from the boxes in the basement. Now, they're from 2,000, but this is what they look like. There's six of them, and they're basically the work that Alona did to get those federal districts in place.
Yes, yes.
So it's more than, it's much more than a list of the properties. It explains their value and why they're, so, and Kristen has at least digital versions, but we think at some point she printed them out. So we just have to figure out how to get Richard these, because I think this is going to be valuable.
Okay.
And there was work done, you know, in previous years on guideline, you know, guidelines if you have one of these, and I know that's way down the road, but just so we don't keep recreating the wheel and recreating the wheel. Now we can officially all know that the box in the basement has basically been recovered.
Is that the only, is that the only copy?
This is, yes, no one can have this copy, but, but Kristen has the email version.
Okay.
I mean, no one wants to print this out more than once, right?
Yeah.
It's a big old...
And I'm sorry, so, so, what is that? Is that application? Is that an approval?
Yes, this is the approval from the Department of Interior when these national historic districts were created, largely, and China, Alona Bell.
And the supporting records that justified creating, you know, Lindbergh, the village, all of that kind of stuff.
The six different...
It's the sort of thing that you'd be really well-served to have on the website, because we're always getting asked for that kind of information, or about my grandmother lived in this house, and, and all that other kind of thing. It's...
So we do have the, we have the national historic districts, like, they're in our Ringo's Land Use Plan, but we don't have this documented anywhere, so...
And what's the significance of the designation? Does that come with, like, federal funding? Does it come with, like, restrictions on...
So I am...
Tax incentive?
I'm no expert at this, but my minimal understanding is that if you have in place standards, guidelines, rules, then there may be some funding, but without that, it doesn't matter much, except that it exists. And all this work that went into getting it, I think, could be very useful.
And is this, like, pertain to all the houses that are in a district? So like, if you, if someone buys that house, they can't change the siding, or, I mean...
Only if you have, no, only if, if, well, and again, I, I don't know. Someone knows more about this than me, Chimeon, Frances.
Yeah, wait, 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 we'll, we'll talk, the public will talk in a minute. I just want this kept around with the board first.
So I own a historic home just over the county line, 849 Amwell Road, 1818 it goes back to, and I went to the Historic Commission there. I want to put Richard in touch with Tim Johnson, who serves there, and I said, you know, this house leaks like a sieve, like, we've got people living here, and we can't afford to heat it. Turns out siding, you don't, you don't require a permit, so you could go in there and put insulated vinyl siding that didn't even have the reveal. The, the only time their Historic Preservation Review Committee has a say is when you're going for a permit application. So there are a lot of things that don't require a permit, and I think we could tell people, well, if you're going to replace the siding, please at least respect the reveal that was there historically.
Well, I mean, I think that's helpful information. I mean, I guess for me, it's sort of bottom line is, I'd like to know more about this from some more professionals or somebody who knows what the significance is, and then how we should be concerned with it, what we should do about it.
And my understanding was that he was just trying to collect information about which homes were historic and why, and I just feel like before he keeps going and going and going, this might be useful.
Yeah.
And also, he said he was looking into tax advantages for things that, you know, would be assistance instead of just prohibitions. You can't have vinyl windows, you can't have, you know. I mean, I, I wonder why, we have farmland assessment. If somebody's using their property for ag, it's like, well, if somebody's playing nice with a historic building, could we give them a historic assessment? Could there be, otherwise, there's no incentive to, it's just going to be demolition by neglect for a lot of places that people aren't going to be able to afford to fix up.
Interesting consideration. So, well, thanks for finding that. I think a lot of questions will follow.
Anyone else?
Something.
Anyone else before I open to the public? Okay. Could I get a motion to open to the public regarding this HPC and the work that Marty's just done?
Major difference...
Wait, wait, I got to open, yeah. Could I get a motion to open?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Frances?
The major difference in the weakness that we have is that back in time, East Amwell did not want to have really any power in the historic preservation, whether it had to do with Alona or something else. So we only have a historic preservation committee, and it's a toothless organization. People who have historic preservation commissions, and how it gets crafted is the sort of thing that you can do as a planning board and township committee to say, what's the difference between, yes, we'd like the historical character to be maintained versus you can't paint your door purple. It can be limited, and it can be inclusive, and then if it's an historic property, there are, in an historic district, it can be potentially eligible for funding the same way that Clausen House was. It wasn't Clausen being in a park, which surely helped, but it was the age and the designation and the way it became an anchor. Properties like the Purple House that everybody fought so much to not get torn down, that is actually got an historic pedigree, and it should be preserved and maintained, not slapped over with sheetrock or, or whatever, that it maintains the character. It's a delicate balance between getting shippo, minding your business and telling you what you can and can't do, and encouraging and setting up standards that will keep the character. And it's doable. Places have done it, and it does not have to be onerous if you take the time to do it, to finesse it, and have agreements on, you know, on how people are going to play and play nice. You cannot, there are places that have, I think parts of Princeton, they'll mandate you must have six over six windows and this, that, and the other. And that's probably a lot for East Amwell and would bring over, but, you know, I would like to be able to have access to a funding source for my historic house, an historic barn, to where I could get Hardy plank versus the 60s aluminum stuff coming completely bees on, on the exterior walls. But you'd have to commit to a commission and to one that was rational and reasonable.
Yep.
But it's definitely Google, and there are people out there who would work with you and help you, not necessarily residents.
Okay, thank you, Frances. Anyone else? Linda?
Linda Raft, East Amwell residents. I'll tell you, I'm having a little problem with this historical part. What we had, that, the one that we had decided to, recommendation from the reexamination report, we'd come up with draft and adopt an historic preservation, preservation plan element. A, develop historic resource inventory, develop local historic preservation district overlays, and develop architectural standards. Then when I went through and looked at what we have here in the, that it said for the reexamination report, and they were saying, prepare a plant, a plan element of the master plan, and determine whether there is need to implement local historic preservation district overlays in order to protect the historic nature of those areas of the township, and the plan should include recommendations for architectural standards. What I'm coming up with, it seems to me like every time we start talking about historical homes and this concept, we start getting down to the nitty-gritty. Is this home a historic one? Let's get a list of all the historic ones. I'm thinking that our plan should say, when you give it, if your house is on this list, our plan should tell you what you would do for that, but it shouldn't be for, we have to know what the individual houses are. I'm saying that getting the list and all of that type of thing should be part of the historical committee. But in our plan, we'll say, if a house is on a historical list, you know, we do the following, but we, it's not our responsibility to develop the list.
Yeah, I think, I believe Richard created his document, it's an inventory of all the historical homes, areas within East Amwell, and I believe he got it all from Punterton.
I mean, we don't need to have that as part of our planning group doing that.
We don't need it for that, but I think it's important to have it on our website or someplace where people can refer to it, and then I think this is like baby steps, that's step one, and we can take it to another step, but like, we, to enforce things like, you know, six over six, or, you know, Hardy plank, or, you know, you have to replace in kind, I, I'm not quite sure if that's the greatest idea.
No, but I'm saying that, you know, like the Purple House, I don't know that it really ne, it's really important to my management pla, the plan. To me, the plan should be, if it's a historical house, this is what we've got to do. But you shouldn't have to worry, you know, you come up and you say, this is a historical house, and then the plan has, what do you do with historical homes? And I think that every time we get started on it, we seem to be getting started on it from the point of view of the Historical Commission, or whatever we call it, where we start coming up with all of these homes and what they are and everything. And I'm saying we could come up with a plan with not having that list to start off with. I'm on the wrong side, but I know it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Tam?
I'm trying to share what I know about this. The significance of having a national historic registry, and if that's all you have, simply means if a project requires federal funding, they're going to have to be reviewed by Department of Interior. That's it. If it doesn't require federal funding, it's not going to get reviewed, and the national historic registry doesn't mean anything.
Do you get a plaque at least?
You can have a plaque.
There's a tax, there's a tax credit for some, for some...
Right, but, but, but for local planning purposes, you really need to have a local historic preservation ordinance that addresses architectural issues that are identified, architectural design issues that are identified in the registry. And the fact that you have a national historic designation justifies putting a local historic ordinance together that addresses architectural issues. Now, there's a broad range of options for dealing with architectural issues. It can be everything from a commission, and where you look at every little, every little detail, to nothing but guidelines, even less than that. Like, and I'll tell you about that in a second. But essentially, the governing body usually decides how much restriction or how little restriction it should have, and then you develop local historic guidelines or standards based on what the governing body wants to do. We have a historic preservation ordinance, but it has no, it doesn't address architecture at all. And we talked previously with the Historic Preservation Committee about helping develop some architectural guidelines or standards, and that, that effort didn't really go anywhere. The national, typically having a national historic registration should get you some grant money. The problem is, one of the first questions they're going to ask is, well, what does your local ordinance say? And if the town hasn't taken it seriously enough to put a local ordinance in place, I mean, we don't even have these historic districts, you know, made official, then you're probably not going to get the grant, because it suggests to the agency that's giving out the money, no, you guys aren't taking this seriously. So it's good to put a local ordinance, or at least take our local ordinance and amend it and put some standards in place, or some guidelines in place. Living in East Amwell as long as I have, I don't think standards would go over very well. I think guidelines are probably more the way to go. And they can work. In fact, one of, the one town that has the most effective system doesn't even have standards. The only requirement they have is that every application that comes for the planning board for a property that's in the historic district, and most of this town is the historic district, has to go to an architectural review committee. The architectural review committee doesn't have to approve it. The applicant can go there, show up, and do absolutely nothing. The key to the, the reason why that system works is that architectural review committee has two architects and a contractor that make up the committee, and all they do is they talk with the applicants about how they could change their projects to make them more architecturally consistent with the historic district, and usually save them money.
Yeah.
And more and more applicants would come back and say, thanks for sending us to those guys. They had good ideas, okay? So that ordinance doesn't even have guidelines or, or standards. So all I'm saying is, there are lots of different ways to do it. Every town has, has a different ordinance, but we can do it, but we need something. It's like, we, we've got this piece of gold. I've never seen a town that had six districts. I've seen two, maybe three, but not six. And it would be, it feels like it's an unfinished project, and it'd be great if we could reach some consensus as to what kind of standards or guidelines we want, and then modify our historic preservation ordinance to work those into it.
On that, on that, the local ordinance, do we have an ordinance? Is it just then...
We have a historic preservation ordinance, but it describes the Historic Preservation Committee and what kind of members they should have, and what the committee should do. It does not have a section on architectural guidelines for how to review projects. So we can't hold anybody to any standard. I mean, and...
Or even tell them what the standard is.
Yeah, and I mean, the planning board can't even talk about that.
I think that would be great. The guidelines that would just encapsulate, like, the revealed wisdom of people who have struggled with how to make historic, I mean, it turns out, I had to go to all these different vendors to figure out that the cheapest way to better insulate that house was to dense-pack cellulose between the existing plaster ceiling and the finished attic floor.
Right.
It wasn't, had, didn't have anything to do with siding, or windows, or like, that was the cheapest, easiest fix.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know, it wasn't intuitive to me.
Right, right. Well, again, the key to that example I told you, were the people that...
The folks who actually do it.
If we don't have those kind of people, then that system won't work.
Yep.
Well, I, I know a couple of those folks in the neighboring county who do, I mean...
We need, we need East Amwell people.
Yeah.
Why? If they're, if they're essentially professionals who do historic preservation, if they're our neighbors, that doesn't count.
No, no, actually, and, and the, our own ordinance says that some of the members don't have to be residents, if, if they have the expertise.
Yeah.
Now, can we get people from out of town to volunteer to do it? I don't know, that's another story. Okay.
Tim, thank you, by the way.
Yeah.
It was helpful to have that. To Linda's point, we're going down this path of catalog, catalog, finding and cataloging, which is great, we'll have it someday, but is she saying, and are you saying, we don't need that, or do in parallel, go ahead and create the overlay districts and create an ordinance with some guidelines or standards? Is that what you're saying, as a, like, as a, as a recommended path?
I think the inventory's done. We know where the districts are. I mean, the, the districts have been mapped by that National Historic Registry, and, and...
Do they need to be zoned or overlaid? Do we need to create...
Well, we need, we need a historic district overlay, yes.
Yes, okay.
And usually what happens is you have a zoning, a zoning plan?
Yep.
And then overlaid on that are the historic districts. And actually, I mean, the reason I got interested in this is because when I was working on the checklist, there was a question there, is your property in the historic district? We don't have historic districts. Why, why is that question even there? Apparently, we do have historic districts, but they haven't been mapped.
Okay, so step one is map, map them, and then step two would be to create an overlay?
Well, this is one, and that's one... Well, that's one of, that's one of the same.
That's one of the same, okay. A, a men once, like, creating the ordinary, or like, literally, like, a legal process.
You wouldn't have to amend, if, if the governing body wanted to do that, we would put the district overlays, show them on the zoning map. It's usually, they shade it.
Have some guidance for those. That's the step.
And that's step, and then, so what's that step? Then you have guidance or standards, or whatever, however, level of whatever on the, where we want to be on the constant, on the con, on the continuum.
Why is this not an overlay? These, these historic districts that are mapped in our, are.
Because it's, it's not, because it's not specifically on the master plan. I mean, on the zoning plan.
Oh, so it exists in this document?
It has to, it has to, yes. It has to exist. It was, it was created, those districts were created with the national historic registry.
As the.
There, there are two components, there are six reports, there are two components to each. One is an inventory of all the historic structures and properties, and the other is the mapping of the districts. And to answer your question, Dante, no, not every building within the districts is historic. But there are enough historic district, enough historic buildings in that, in each district that the Department of the Interior said, okay, we'll designate that whole district.
That way you can deal with the character of that.
Well, that's right. So even historic properties that are, even properties that are in the historic district, but maybe aren't historic themselves, if they come before the planning board, you would want them to design, you don't want a geodesic dome in the middle of Ringo's. You know, it's out of character. So even buildings that are not historic, we want them to pay attention to how they're designing, so it's consistent with historic character.
The district can remain historic.
Exactly.
So, for instance, if we had an historic overlay district and a, and a large multifamily property was coming in, we could say, we want your architectural standards to be consistent with the historic nature of this area, you know, whatever you want to do. You know, make it look like a Victorian house.
You're right.
Going. Is that what you're trying, kind of getting to?
You're absolutely right.
Or someone, if you're in another historic district, someone wants to put in an extremely modern, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, but it's really inconsistent, and it changes the view shed completely, right? You've got all these barns, and, and the next thing you know, you have like this massive, whatever you want to call it. This would give us that power. This is a, a method to get to that.
And it's important, because, I mean, you see this in other parts of the country. And, you know, where I grew up on Eastern Long Island, you know, McDonald's wants to put in there, it doesn't look like the McDonald's that we see with plastic arches and everything. It looks like, you know, a wooden building.
I used to go to one of those.
Right, right.
And so, and, yeah, and, and that's important. Like, think of our district, our, our village district, right? You don't want that lost for any reason. And so, having that is a very important thing for the character of it. You know, it's one of the important factors of the village.
And, and a local ordinance can go beyond the national historic registry. For instance, you could say, these six districts are part of the historic district, as well as any property where the house is older than, you know, 1850, or pick a year.
Yep.
So even older homes that are outside his, the historic districts from those, those six would be part of the historic district.
I think it's an important tool. So, I mean, I, I would be very happy if our look at the historic preservation, you know, includes this kind of approach.
I, I like the step one is the map and the ordinance. Create, create, change the zone, zoning, basically. Do, create the overlay zones.
Well, you can, you can actually, you can do it all at one time. I mean, it, it, there's, there's little point in creating the districts, putting the districts on the zoning map. If, you don't have anything to back it up and tell people what to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just was worried about getting down in the weeds about the standards and ever getting there, and whether there was a value to just at least putting the word out.
I think putting the word out that you're thinking about working on it is probably going to do enough. But, yeah, it, it wouldn't do anything to put it on the plan if you don't also have something to back it up.
And it's not out of the realm of possibility that we could find some people to help us create some advisory board that was helpful and therefore was effective.
I don't see why not.
Taking your model that, that you shared.
Yeah, I mean, what I like about Tam's idea there is, I mean, you could start with that right away, right? Even if you're going through, as you say, an minutia of standards or guides, or what you call it, right? Which gets sticky. At, at least having experts look at it and, you know, offer helpful advice is a tremendous thing. And it's, it's not too regulatory, it's, it's not necessarily binding, but it could have good effects, and it definitely could help maintain the character. I mean, we're all about keeping the character rural, and, you know, so. So I, I like that, you know, suggestion particularly. And that's something which I think we could do sooner rather than later, while we think about other possibilities. And maybe we do, and maybe we don't want to have more restrictions.
Yeah, there may be some ordinances that we can look at in other areas. Tam probably has some ideas where we could get at least the base level guidelines. They may not be the final. But, for example, don't build square, big square buildings. That's not what you would say.
I'm guessing Tam has many, many draft versions of this.
Yes, you look at the plastic Taj Mahal, right? You get something that's more of character.
Tam, as far as the zoning overlay goes, I mean, is it much more complicated than this?
No.
Okay.
And the county can do it for you.
I mean, we have it. This is our.
The county can do it for you for your master plan to plug it into that.
I mean, it's in our, this plan you sell in is part of our master plan. We, we have it. It's right here.
It just has to be mapped. It's a computer exercise. Map it on our zoning map. That's all.
Right, it's a GIS, like, function, right? So, yeah, I, I, I like the thought a lot.
Good. Likewise.
We have a plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good. One more time, Frances.
I know, yeah, I'll do it with feeling. One of the things that was discussed for a number of years and didn't get anywhere was a demolition ordinance, and also to take the properties that were in these districts and have them identified in township records and stuff as being in an historic district, which would then rem, require somebody that if you're going to be doing something, whether it's fix it up or tear it down, it has to go before historic preservation. And there were always problems with the order of construction permits coming to the historic preservation. And it would get there after the planning or some other, and it was gone. How many of you know that there used to be a tavern on the corner of Rileyville Road and Wertzville Road? If you turn right there, there's this cement wall. Well, there was a tavern there. And there are a number of historical buildings that have been disappeared, and people just do it, and under the thing of, well, didn't know I didn't have to, and it's easier to ask forgiveness. And I think Tam knows of one that was substantially altered with that. So if you make it to where, if, and that's a list you can give to West Amwell zoning officer to where they check the list. One, two, three, Wertzville Road? Well, it's in Unionville and all of that other stuff. Now, I think where I am is a hamlet, so it's not a full-blown district. There were more than just the historic districts. There were a number of little hamlets that supported it that Alona wanted to, and the lady from Pennsylvania, they wanted to work on. But if you just take that inventory that's with the county and you put it on there, that if you're going to be doing something, they check, and then it becomes another box you have to go to. You have to go to planning or construction, but you also have to go before historic preservation, however you define it. And, you know, define what it is you're going to do, especially if it's a demolition. Because there's so many places that are on the edge of destruction, and it's kind of a miracle that they haven't all just sort of been bulldozed and more castles built.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on, items for discussion is the invoice, are the invoices? Has everybody had a chance to review all the invoices that are out there on, on our drive? Okay. Any comments or concerns?
I, I just have one, one comment in the, in the mode of transparency is that Al and I did meet with Alexis' firm and had a good conversation about the bills because we are running short on our budget. And the firm was very helpful in, in, in efforts to help us stay within our budget for the balance of the year. So we had a very constructive conversation. I appreciate that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve all the invoices that are?
Can I just ask one question about the, the August one?
Yes.
I mean, this is kind of nitty gritty, but maybe you can just clarify it for me. There's a, a fee for an email about Sapphire Equestrian, but it's on the general invoice? Is there?
So, yeah, so what happened with that is because that was before we took, it was before we took over. So that's why we didn't have a separate code for that.
So that one's been checked.
Anything that will hap, that won't come from us. So that'll be something that we can generate, like a separate bill of it, something that you need to give to them. But just because that was not an application that we heard, we didn't even handle the resolution or anything. We didn't open up a separate billing ID for that, like we do for any other application.
And is that also the same with the setback, the 200-foot list?
The 200, what was that one for?
It was check law on validity of 200-foot list. Questions concerning the issue. It was August 9?
I don't know. I would have to look at billing to be 100% honest. It's off my head.
Is there anything we have to do to get it on, on escrow?
Like, if it goes to an escrow, anytime we get an application, right? We open up a separate, like, billing code, right? And that's where it goes to that.
Right, because you didn't have that billing code.
Sometimes, if it was like an application, that might actually have been for.
I think it was. I can't remember which one.
A subdivision or something before our time. So because it was before we handled the application and we handled the resolution, we don't have a separate billing code. Normally, I'll put like Sapphire Equestrian.
So should we just have Kristen send you the escrow code or something? So it doesn't come out of?
We don't handle that. We'll just give you the bill. So we, the way we separated.
So something to see like that. Because otherwise, it's coming out of our general.
Now, this is broken out, I'm not entirely sure how it goes out to each individual line item or, you know, billing code. You know, to me, it was a little confusing. Marnie and I came in here, and, but, speaking to Alexis, speaking to Megan's firm.
I, I don't know, but, but I want to underscore what you're saying. We had a good conversation about that. And so, the firm was saying that, you know, obviously, they're trying to track what, what are escrow items so that those get reimbursed, town gets reimbursed for that. I'm not sure what the mechanism is, so I underscore your point that we do have to make sure we have that. Because it is, I agree with you, very helpful that items that are escrow because applicants pay for it.
Right, and if we don't notice it, no one's going to notice it, and it's just going to come out of general instead of escrow. So we'll figure out.
Well, Kristen should know. I mean, Kristen should tell Yolika.
Kristen should be able to, right, this amount is for escrow account, whatever, whatever. Right, there was a problem, though, she wasn't always seeing the, they were, she was always.
Getting the bills, they were going directly.
Right, they were going directly. So that's something.
So I'm not sure how I want to handle it, but that process, I think, is right. So we have it clear, so certain things are billed under various escrow accounts.
Right.
What's left is only the general account that's helpful.
And also, I'll just add, for whatever it's worth, Kristen is really only a planning board secretary, and sort of like managing escrow versus general is more a planning board administrator role. So just, I think that's why we have to be so vigilant, because.
Yeah, and at some point in time, I'll come into the office here and figure out how this gets broken down. And I can make notes of it and look at it from that perspective. And of course, inform you, and, you know, township committee.
You don't have to tell me. I'm happy not to have to look at it.
It's important to understand it, because, you know, I look at these invoices, and then we're billing out, and it's like, are we over budget, under budget? And it, to me, it's confusing. I'd just like to see the processes behind it.
We try, at least for the ones that we don't like, the, like, I think that was a subdivision, if I remember. It just doesn't make sense to open up a whole file for a small little, right? And the attorneys know that. It's a pain administratively. So we try our best to, like, bracket it, like, so you know, or whoever's reviewing that bill, this isn't going to general. It's under the general, because we don't have another code to put it under when we're, it's going in our L and S system. But you know it's going to an escrow that's already existing, yeah.
We just have to iron it out on our.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard when, with the logistics of, you know, you have like a point two that, for something, you're not going to open up, make our administration write through that, but, yeah, it's tough. But that should be less and less now that, the longer that it's been. Like, now we're towards the end of the year. So anything that we're lingering from last year, we should already have open files. We'll already have open files for.
Great. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, with that all being said, can I get a motion to approve all those invoices? Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Excellent. Oral reports time. Farmland, open space. Mr. Mills?
Nothing in addition to our plan.
Okay. Environmental Commission, Marnie?
Um, I think the most exciting thing is that the environmental commission, and when I say environmental commission, really, I mean Allison, was able to get the two jug handles on 202. They're going to be planted as pollinator habitats. They're going to be planted, and they're going to be maintained by the state. So we'll get the beautiful wildflowers and butterflies and birds, and it will not be a weight on our DPW. Yay, Allison.
Good, good. Thank you. Back to Mr. Mills for the agriculture.
Nothing for mag advisory. We meet again Wednesday.
I'm going to skip over historical preservation. Township committee, anything?
I don't have anything to add besides the farmland that we discussed earlier. I don't know if Dante has anything.
Okay.
Oh, I, I'm sorry to jump in for, Historic Preservation Committee. I did speak with Paul Carlucci. He's a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. And besides the houses, he's trying to keep track of historic barns in the area. So if anybody has any barns they know of that they think are historic, or, you know, would be good, you could email the Historic Preservation Committee and let them know where they're located and stuff.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, John. Planning Board Secretary, Linda?
First thing, I'm married on Saturday. She looks beautiful.
Nice. Congrats to Kristen.
She's excused.
Thank you for filling in.
Yes.
And congratulations to them. For me, I want to just, again, thanks to the subcommittees for all the hard work they've done on these tasks. I really appreciate it. You know, you guys have come up with some really good stuff. And I'm sure our township residents are pleased as punch. And also, thanks to the township residents who come here and speak. It's, it's nice to hear your opinions and thoughts and concerns. Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion to open up public?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone?
To be brief with my earlier comment that went unsaid is I went on the website, and all that was there was an agenda. Did you approve minutes somewhere today? There were no minutes on the website.
I don't have access to her stuff. She told me everything was done and gave them to me. And gave me the, like, the packet with all the agendas and everything, but I didn't do anything in addition to what she had already done. She thought, she told me it was done, so unfortunately.
Are you looking for old minutes?
This last minute, right, the ones from August.
The August ones. Are they in your drive?
They're in the drive.
Okay.
But do we release them before they're voted on?
Well, they're posted after.
After they're voted on.
They're never, they're never.
Because they're not approved.
Yeah, we didn't approve them yet.
And they use, okay.
So they'll be out there, but just, you know, give.
For years, they used to have drafts circulated, and it's gone one way.
Yeah, I, I think there's, the final would be good. But gi, give us a little bit of time, since Kristen's on vacation and nobody else has access to that drive. Should look at a backup just in case, you know. She never comes back and goes away and moves to Hawaii. Who knows? Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's no correspondent. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, September 18th, 2023 meeting is over at 8:33.
All right, Al.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.[1790.34]